Need to order the chair notes. There's a forum present and we will do the flag. I will move into 2.0, which is additions and revisions to the agenda. What do you got, Pat?
I don't.
What? Are you sure? Okay.
I had a step earlier.
Oh, good for you. Good job. Okay, on to 3.0, which is correspondence and public comment. Individuals wishing to address the county court may do so at this time and at other times throughout the meeting. Speakers are asked to raise your hand to be recognized by the chair, give your name and address, and limit comments to three minutes. If you are joining us via the Zoom platform, if you called in on your phone, it is star six to unmute yourself or the lower left-hand side of your screen if you are on your computer. And then I also, because we have some new faces in the room, also like to just remind folks that we are very informal here. So as we move through the agenda, if you have questions or want to provide the court with input, we welcome that. And it does not look like public comment at this point. Then we'll move into correspondence. There are several things in here. There is a letter to us from Jeffrey Forrest, the Oregon State Director at USDA, letting us know that there has been some additional funding provided to for our Wildlife Services Athens, which the county contributes a portion for that service every year. And so basically it's just good news, letting us know that we are going to have to pay a little bit less for this current I N E M because of some additional funding that was not originally anticipated.
The way I read it, the forty thousand is the additional over the point.
So that is the amount that we will actually be paying, and I don't have my budget with me, but I want to say eighty now. So it's a pretty good little savings, actually.
Oh, you're a fair enough. Okay.
Correct. So it'll just be fun that we don't, that we budgeted, but we don't end up spending for that piece. And there is also a letter from Ellen Hunter, who is the museum curator for the Gillum County Historical Society Board. Basically thanking the county for its operational support grants, talking a little bit about what those ones are being used for, including purchasing a scanner to digitally preserve their photos, which is really cool. And so that is in there. And then we have a report from the Gillum East John Day Watershed Council for 2021, 2022. And they are required to report to us on a regular basis. And so keep up, put together the, a written report. So you would have that. And for members of the public who are listening and want to read any of these letters or see the Watershed Council report, all of those are always included online as part of the county court's packet. So we don't read them here to save time, but if you are interested in reading them, those are always available to you. And okay, let's move into 4.0, which is the consent agenda. Joe, anything for the consent agenda? Um, I moved to confirm the consent agenda.
Second.
And moved and seconded that we approved the consent agenda, which consists of consider approval of September 21st, 2022, regular minute, a regular meeting minutes, consider approval of October bill's pending review, and consider approval of fiscal year 2022, 2023 transportation of veterans and highly rural areas grant agreement. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Michelle carries. Okay, moving on to 5.1, which is unfinished business. And discuss possible expansion of Shuttler Station Road and Zayo access. So this, as you guys recall, but just for the public's edification, came up during our last meeting. Our planning director was there for another planning issue and raised with us that Zayo is currently going through the planning process for that acre-ish of land that they are leasing from us at Shuttler Station for communications equipment. The question came up on, on the court's preferred access points to that property, because it's the south part of Shuttler Station. Shuttler Station Road does not extend into there. And so what you have, and so that actually led to a clutter discussion about whether we need to look at actually extending Shuttler Station Road itself to be able to access the southern part more readily for new tenants coming in, if we have them. And so in your packet, you have a map of the, the little triangle where Zayo is actually leasing. And then the second one shows the, the larger overview. So you can have the context of where that is. And so I think the first, maybe the first question to ask you is, is there interest? Should we be looking at taking Shuttler Drive, Shuttler Station Drive and extending it into the southern part of the park? I think the roadmaster has weighed in that he think he would prefer not to have like a ton of little driveways onto Cedar Springs.
Thank you.
Exactly, especially with all the trucks going into the site. And that's a lot of potential accidents occurring. And so I think in general, he was, felt like extending Sheller Southward was probably made the most sense so that any tenants in the southern would go onto Shuttler Drive. And then there's two basically entrances, one off of Cedar Springs and Glen, one off of Highway 19.
Is he on there now?
Uh, I do not.
Give him a little bit. He's a crawler.
Yeah, Pat, I'm, I'm on.
Can you talk to us a little bit? Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, yes. Um, originally when Shuttler Station was built, that was where the access, the, I guess it's the Cedar Springs access hit the road. That was the end of any of the design that was done. And it would be great if we did just extend Shuttler Drive all the way down to accommodate any expansion, anything that needed to be done in that southern part of the park.
Is that something we can do internally? You're gonna have to have somebody else do it.
Well, we, we did all, we did everything in Shuttler Station that's, that's there now. We did everything except for the paving.
I'm talking about the paving. I'm talking about the paving. Is that something we could pave or?
We could, yes, we could pave it. Now, with, with, we have the equipment to do it. At the time it was built, we did not have the equipment and we do have it now.
I do know that on that particular property, that this map doesn't really show the railroad spurs. The one that deadheads or dead, it's got the stop on it. And the very south, there is an access gravel road out of that corner prior to the crash coming through there.
Right. And that has to be maintained for railroad maintenance.
Yeah, that's, that's just a railroad access. It's not.
Yes, yes, that's not. Yes.
I guess I'd be in favor of it.
I think so, yeah. Well, it just makes sense. I mean, you look at the map, you can see where it would go. I mean, it's really kind of already there, so.
I think you just want to extend it up to kind of about where this lease property is because the road going into that triangle is going to get up the mountain to that property.
Yeah, I agree. There's probably gonna even be a fence, I would guess, around there anyway. So, yeah. To protect access to that. So in terms of next steps, Dewey, I'm assuming this is something that would need to be maybe worked into next year's?
Yes, it would. Yes.
And so we could then, I think, look at using some economic, probably some economic development dollars to backfill any cost that the road department incurs to do it. Does that sound right?
Yeah, I mean, I guess until, well, if we do it before the 15 years old, yeah, we'd have to do that one. I mean, I don't know what, when he would, what time was scheduled? Do you think you'd do something like that?
It would just, it would have to fit into basically our, as soon as we get done with our spring grading. And then try to use that as, so we do our paving all at the same time.
Right.
You know, do fit everything. But if we are going to extend that road down into the industrial park, do we want to do anything with the rest of the infrastructure? Which is the water sewer, you know, the rest of the utilities? Or do we just want to build the road for now and then, and then look at that later on?
Yeah, I don't know what's there. I mean, I assume all that stuff goes to the fire plant and stops.
Yeah. There's nothing there.
Everything is. Everything is right at the bat, just right past the bash plant. Where that south road goes, that's, that's the end of all the infrastructure is right there.
I mean, I think there's probably a broader discussion as well. We're, have we heard back from the state on the second wind? Uh, yeah, it's approved. So we still have that second currently undrilled well that we have the water rights secured on that we went back and made sure that we still have that, those permits. That has timelines on it that we're going to need to make a decision on whether we want to drill the well or not. So I'm feeling like maybe this is a broader discussion, like.
The one hurry this one.
Like item number one is definitely extending the road, I think, but then also looking at the utilities and maybe having it be a larger project.
Get some vast amounts. Last test of months.
We, there will, there'll have to be some engineering done, Pat.
Yeah, yeah.
For, for all of that.
Okay.
So for now, I think it's getting the road extended and then we'll get on the court future.
Talk about the broader plan.
About the whole plan.
Um, because the other thing that our planning director, Michelle Colby, had raised with me, which I am still sort of mulling over is really kind of mapping out so that she can see and others can see when we have leases coming in and off, where the utility lines, where, you know, all of these pieces. And so I just had a brief discussion with Jeff Schott about like, how would one go about doing that? Like, do we hire a consultant to come in? And he said actually that potentially our contact and our contract with Kearney County for G S services, that they might actually be able to do a lot of that work for us already, if we can provide that information. And they can do layers, you know, a show where the utility fly, they can do layers that where the, 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 and then it would just be up to our staff to keep in touch with Kearney County when there's a change in the lease or something like that. He thought that was probably going to be the most cost effective way for us to address sort of an overall map. But that doesn't get to like the strategic where we want to put new infrastructure and all that kind of stuff. So I just wanted to put that data point that that was something else that Michelle had raised with me that would be really useful as she's especially looking at the planning side of getting somebody permitted to actually use once we've agreed to allow them to use the Shuttler Station. So, um, so in terms of Michelle's specific feedback to Zayo. Michelle, are you on? Can you hear us?
Yes, I'm on.
Are you able, knowing that the plan is within, say, the next 12 to 18 months, that Shuttler Drive will be extended to Zayo's property? Are you able in your planning reviews and approvals to, I think ultimately that is the road that we will want them to use. So are you able to sort of note that like the next 18 months, they need to use a certain, you know, route? And then once the road is created, then we would expect that they would use the road.
They're either gonna have to go through the gravel part where that road ends, yard or go out the railroad.
Yeah. Does that, does that make sense, Michelle, for, I don't quite know how that looks on the planning side, if you're able to stipulate that?
We can make that work and I would work with Dewey on that, the roadmaster. So if we have to flag something, so they stay down a particular route, we can work on that. And then I need to coordinate with our emergency manager to get them an address.
Got it. Okay. So it sounds like in terms of next steps, we need to have it engineered. Sounds like it maybe. Dewey, is that something that you want to work? I mean, this is kind of this funky thing where we've got two, technically Shuttler Station is mine, but the road department is Pat's. So and I don't know. I mean, Pat, you're, do you want to take this piece on?
Sure.
Okay, so Pat will be the main point on the court on extending the road. And Delaney and I will work on bringing back something related to the well. And, and maybe talk to Jeff a little bit about, because I think he knows where all those lines are as well. If he could maybe even join us for a meeting to kind of talk about where the infrastructure might need to go. I think there's telecom or like fiber actually through that whole thing, which is why Zayo is at the, the south bend.
Right. Well, they, they ran it all down the edge.
Yeah. So I think we may just be talking about water and maybe that is part of.
Water and power.
Yeah. Maybe that's part of the broader question on drilling the well and then extending the service.
Well, you have to step across the road too, that's got nothing.
Yeah. And so it, it has no value to the side of the parking lot at this point. Yeah.
Yeah. So we could look at both of those things. The other issue that has popped up that is related, just as a data point for you all and for the public at large, is that we still, part of that, uh, the maps, the FEMA flood maps still show portions of that in the flood zone, even though the county has taken steps to mitigate those. So Jeff has talked to me at various times about wanting to get FEMA to remap that portion. Because it's.
Won't that be done through the whole flood map process?
Well, that is what I'm hoping, is that the larger project for the countywide will address it. But I think as part of our meetings there, I think we want to get really clear with them on like, this is an area that we definitely want to take a look at because there's retaining ponds now and, and other things that were never there before. So their maps are not accurate. So all of this to say, next steps, Pat will work with Dewey on the engineering and I think as well, Dewey, if you guys can work together on a cost estimate and then I will go looking for money. If you think it's going to be spring, there should be plenty of economic development dollars that could at least get the project started. And even if the paving ends up being July, then we could just do it over two fiscal years.
It'd be late May, early June where it starts in the pavement.
Yeah. So my question is, at this point, when is Zayo gonna start their project? And how are they accessing that now?
They will have to go through the yard, probably here, or they could go in.
So they'll have to have an agreement with Omega Morgan to go up their lease property in order to.
So Michelle.
They wouldn't have to. Well, I don't know what the railroad access, what the requirements are on that for somebody else to use.
Michelle, for the temporary access, we're just talking about whether they would use the little railroad access that's at the southern sort of corner, or whether they would be coming into the gravel sort of where I'll make a Morgan stages, its components.
They would become the office, either Highway 19 and using Shuttler Drive, or they would come off it to the streams and then turn west into their area.
Use the railroad access road. So does that mean, yeah, I'm confused. Does that mean they're using the railroad access as opposed to driving through? Okay.
No, no, no. We do not want them using that railroad access at all. And I think the roadmaster agrees with that.
Yeah, I agree with that as well. Thank you.
So it sounds then, wait, are they gonna go, they would be going through then where Omega Morgan's currently leasing, correct? The gravel.
How in the planning process, when you do that and you have that leased and you want to access it through there, that's all that work? Because you could say, this is our access road, even though it's not gravel. It's like, until you get, until you get paid it.
I suspect, I mean.
That area is part of, is road.
I mean, I think, um, maybe this could be resolved by connecting Michelle, Omega Morgan, and Zayo, and just having a conversation and an expectation. I don't know if Zayo or if Megan Morgan, I mean, they're, they have been very easy to work with. And so I don't know if they could maybe even just meet Zayo out there and kind of show where and have that sort of conversation and then.
Yeah, I assume the yard, the way they're using it now, I think they have zero problem with it.
Yeah.
They fill it pretty late at some point.
Yeah, right.
It will become an issue.
And I think, I mean, that's a good reminder anyway, that we probably need to reach out to Zayo and just let them know that our intention is to extend the roads out. So that's going to impact the footprint of what they're actually leasing as well. Ultimately.
And can, uh, can I break in again?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, one thing that'll have to, we'll have to have a discussion with Omega Morgan anyways, because their lease will have to be adjusted uh, when we do build the, the new Shuttler Drive road down into the southern part of this. So they'll, they'll be losing some of their acreage when we build the new road.
Right.
So we'll, we'll have to get them in on the discussion, you know, fairly soon.
Okay.
And the planning and everything.
So what I will do is, how about this, Pat, if you can take sort of the longer term plan and vision, um, getting the engineering, all of that lined up. I will follow up on the well and the water specifically, but also possibly power. So talk to Columbia Basin and just see what's, what's what. And then on the specific question of the day, which is Zayo's, and Delaney and I can help make the connection between Michelle, Zayo, and Omega Morgan. And as part of that conversation with Omega Morgan, we can give them some notice that we're planning on doing some infrastructure development in part of their leased portion.
Okay. Sounds like a plan.
Does that work?
How long is their lease? Is it just another year in December?
Uh.
I think it's through December.
Yeah, it might be. I don't remember. I wouldn't surprise them if it was in the winter. I think if I recall, it's as simple as them just emailing us and saying we want to extend it a year.
Yeah, we made it as simple as possible. So. Or that we didn't have to go through rewriting another amendment. Yeah, yeah. Because we were having to do a amendment after amendment.
It's a much cleaner, Sherri, I have it looking on that so much.
Destiny for your children.
Yeah, yeah. And that was being simple.
Yeah. Um, okay. So Delaney will look that up. And are you guys ready to move on? Yes. Okay. Let's move on to 5.2, which is discuss updates to Gillum County Road Committee operations and functions. So again, just to recap, we started this discussion during the last meeting. The Road Committee Chairman Frank Bettencourt had reached out. And just wanting some guidance regarding the court's intention in terms of the frequency of meetings for this committee. And then, exactly. And then during this discussion, we also realized that we needed to make some reappointments to the board that we didn't really know. Exactly. And so we were brought up to speed on those two issues during our September 21st meeting. We instructed our staff to bring back suggested amendments to the original resolution, which was 2019 dash 01. And, and so that's what you have in your packet is those suggested amendments currently. There's basically two. Which is adding the frequency of the meetings and then also making clear on the reappointments, how those would look when they're, when folks are reappointed.
I think we need to have in the, in the resolution, a responsibility for court edge of the meeting to be the chair of the committee.
I thought that was in this.
Miranda, Jolie and Dewey.
Okay.
That they should be responsible to make sure we have a meeting every quarter, chairman. That makes sense?
Yeah, because that isn't actually addressed, that they will.
Yeah, it says a little bit about what the chair's responsibility is, but I think we can add the expectation that they are working with designated staff to, to schedule and prepare for the meetings.
Get that in there.
Yep. Is there anything else that you guys see that?
That was the only thing that I.
Where is it? Where does it say that they meet once a quarter, right?
It doesn't.
It doesn't currently.
Well, that needs to be added too. Okay.
So.
And then the, then also the term will determine whether the promise can be added to it.
So what, um, I don't need a motion from you guys today. I just need kind of a consensus on these are the changes we'd like to see. We need to go back to legal counsel and see whether we need to draft a resolution restating the entire thing, or whether we need to draft a resolution amending the original one. And so she'll have to sort out which way is actually cleaner. It may be cleaner to just restate it.
Over.
Um, and so if so, we'll have her prepare it with the changes that we discussed today, and then we'll bring it back for court approval.
Sure.
And in the meanwhile, Miranda is working on connecting with the existing members to see if anybody's interested in being reappointed and it's also being advertised, correct?
And we have been taking that over. So she's been reaching out.
Got it.
Trying to take a little bit off Miranda and pass it.
Well, it's a, it, it is the road committee, so it makes sense that the road office manager would. Yes. So, um, but I do think, as we discussed before, that Miranda and Delaney will be there to help support to make sure that the public meeting requirements get done appropriately, the first couple of meetings, just so that, because that's new territory, I think, for Jolie. So. And then once she feels confident, then it's her, her baby. Um, okay. Anything else on that piece? Dewey, did you have anything you wanted us to note or add about the road?
No, I do not. I do not at this time. No.
Okay. Um, let's move on to 6.1, which is Willow Creek Water Storage Project Request. Um, I think I saw it here. And Herb, are you on?
Herb is not able to make it today.
Got it. Okay. So if you guys recall during public comments last meeting, Kip was here talking about this proposed water storage project at Willow Creek. And, um, basically presenting sort of a, the idea would be that we help cover part of the application fee in addition to Morrell County chipping in. And then assuming that that grant is approved, that the county may also provide funds for the matching funds for the feasibility study. And around that time, we also reached out to Herb Winters at SWCD. The SWCD board is supportive of this project. And so I talked to him about SWCD actually being the applicant and the recipient, because our funding guidelines say that we work with other taxing districts, other nonprofits. And we don't really have a mechanism to say provide funds to say a private land owner or something like that. So this seems to be the cleanest to go through SWCD. And I did talk to him about the court approving the funds for the application, which is like, Kip reminded me when it's due, like in a couple of weeks, right?
Yeah, November 2nd.
And then should that be successful and they need the matching funding, the amount that they're looking for actually could be covered by special projects grant pretty easily. And so we had talked about reopening at least the North Bowl for sure, because uh, we didn't fully extend it in the spring. So we were already talking about opening that and then SWCD would be the applicant for those funds is what we've looked at and use Morrell County's funds as the match, basically. And so assuming the court indicated that we were in general, I think, supportive of, of this. And so assuming that is still the case, what I would be looking for today is just a motion to approve the amount to go towards the grant application fee. And then the idea would be that SWCD would need to submit an application when the special projects grants open this fall.
I move to approve providing funds to Gillum County Southern Water Conservation District an amount of $1,870 to be used towards the Oregon Water Research Grant Application Team for Willow Creek Water Storage Project.
Second, it's been moved and seconded that we approved providing. Second, it's been moved and seconded that we approved providing the funds to uh, Gillon Soil and Water Conservation District in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. To be used toward the Oregon Water Resources Grant Application Fee for the proposed Willow Creek Water Storage Project. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I.
I, any opposed? Motion carries. We will coordinate with Herb to get a check over to him. And then I will, I see Nori's on here, so, and Roger, so they are probably taking notes. Nori and Roger will also uh, follow up to make sure you have the deadlines for the Special Projects Grant, if you need, if you end up needing the matching funds. Which hopefully you will.
Campbell?
Uh, yes, Les.
Morning, not Les Ruark Rock Creek. May I ask a couple of quick questions about this matter before you move on?
Go ahead.
First off, I, I can't find on the, on the Soil and Water Conservation District's website. Um, where the board itself has taken action in support of this matter. And I was just curious if whether or not it just may be that Herb has put forth the, an, an informal. Uh, courtesy of his letter, an informal, um, uh, support for, for the, for the matter involved. But more importantly, I, I need to have an understanding, and I would believe that probably the court does too, and I'm just not aware of it. But I'd like to have some kind of a explanation here on record, uh, this morning as to where this effort takes up. From where the Port of Arlington's irrigation feasibility study left off, or am I? Are, are, are these two matters uh, separate and distinct? Can someone kind of clue me in on that?
They're separate.
Yeah.
Hey, how, how so?
This is for, this is for, for storage of water in the aqua.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
For both more on Gillon.
Yeah, so it doesn't, I mean, maybe Kip, for those who missed it. Kip, I thought you presented a really compelling, the number of gallons that are, that are, could be utilized for this. And so maybe outline, just in broad terms, kind of what you're looking at. But Les, it's definitely, we're not talking about like Columbia River Water Rights or any of that, that was caught up in the other irrigation study.
Okay, that's kind of the preliminary understanding I took away from it too, but I, the reason I'm asking is I just want to be kind of clear on that. Because if there is not a hidden agenda necessarily, but an attempt to sort of make a connection between the two. I think that needs to be out there out front as we go forward here, but if it isn't there now, then, then it isn't there, uh, and I appreciate the answer. Um, in terms of getting back to my first question, it might be, um, beneficial for the court moving forward here. To make sure that the board, the, the Soil and Water Conservation District Board has taken action in this matter versus it just being. An, a letter of support from staff, because I can't, and maybe Nori's, I understand, online this morning, she could answer this. But I sure can't see where the board has taken action that's reflected on their, uh, in their minutes or. Or what I've received for their board meetings to date, and I just think it'd be important to make sure that there actually is that, uh, board support. Kate, thank you for putting up with me, I'm gonna go back to having my morning coffee.
Um, I, we can definitely follow up on the question. I will say that I did speak to some of the board members separately, uh, of the request. And they appeared to be fully aware of it and fully supportive, so I don't know if they, the mechanisms within their board in terms of actually taking a vote. Um, but it sounds like they have at minimum been briefed and provided input, um, to Herb, that they were supportive. So, Nori, I saw you unmuted.
Yes, and I can speak to that briefly, um, yes, we have an upcoming board meeting, um, next Tuesday, um, we've been on summer hiatus. But Herb has spoken with all of the board members, um, individually who are in support of it, um, especially due to the fact, the things that can be learned through this study. That could, um, benefit, um, residents in Gillon County in the future, so. And it will be documented at our upcoming board meeting.
Sounds like perhaps, Les, they were wanting to make sure the county would provide funding before they roll in.
They just haven't met.
Yeah. Okay, um, so yes, we will get, uh, the check cut as well, and we'll circle back with, um, Herb. To, um, close the loop on the special projects request. Um, okay, let's move into six point two, which is Rock Creek Bridge Replacement and Road Closure Update. Dan Shanahan, is that you? That, uh, that should, I'm just making sure I'm catching you. You're close enough, you're close enough.
Uh, Dan Shanahan, ODAT, uh, her district manager of the DOWS, so we oversee the section of the highway, uh, pretty much. Up into, just right after the Rock Creek Bridge, more to the west is kind of what we oversee, but. Um, the Rock Creek Bridge Project, our, uh, project team reached out to me about the road authority to shut it down for, uh, two to four weeks. During the final, uh, grade improvements to the new bridge, so the current bridge is failing. Um, it needs to go, and part of the project involves putting in a new bridge, um, there will be a detour route they put that bridge in. A so-called temporary bridge, but the final part of, you know, putting that bridge together, I brought my project leaders. So you can correct any of this that's wrong, and I'm gonna hold my. But, um, you know, and raising the bridge is the final piece to kind of help with some of the issues that bridges had passed, so. You raise the bridge, you gotta raise the grade of the road, and there really isn't a way to do that without shutting down the road that's economically feasible. So we need those two to four weeks to shut it down, the final grade into the new bridge.
What is your proposed detour?
Well, we're not gonna propose your category, we're not gonna propose guys canyon here, cause our freight needs to go on the highway. But if you needed an emergency detour route, I mean, that's our proposed one, it's gonna be within our system. Uh, but if you guys want to manage a detour route for your emergency services, local people, I mean, that's.
Yeah, I'll, I'll read Dewey's concern list, is that okay, Dewey?
He's still on, but he's muted.
He's got mail route, grocery freight, NAPA freight, Husken steel freight. UPS and FedEx delivery services, less web tire, few deliveries, various pharmacies and drug delivery. Sure, missed a few, then he said local traffic, he's got a bunch of local traffic in there. There was also some contracts, some of these are contracts, I think the mail runs contract, and some of these are contracted. He was looking at, um, like a sixty-four mile detour or something.
Yeah, highway system is pretty.
I mean, kind of problematic.
It is, uh, we don't really have a way to mitigate the final part unless we come up with. Significant amount of funding, alas.
So I, I'm gonna jump in a little bit here, cause you know, I have a little more history on it. Wade Leibman, uh, transportation project manager of ODAT, ten years since the beginning, I talked to Dewey about a year ago, told him we wanted to shut it down for three months, and. His response wasn't so favorable. But you know, I had some great, great points with the proud, great routes, the, you know, locals coming from Hattner over to. Yeah, the, the person that works with the, on the public works department that comes from Hattner over. And so we started looking at, so we, we went from nothing, you know, we're just going, why do we want to shut it down? That's the most cost effective, fastest, boom, if we get in there and get it done, that's what makes sense. Well, obviously, that's not gonna happen with the, no real good detours around. So then we went to, we looked at five, six different options, and we came around with, and, and just, cause Dan's a little new to this, so I haven't given him all the information.
This is my second month on the job up here, I relocated out of Central Oregon, so I need to bring in some resources.
So it won't be a bridge, and that was the initial, it was a bridge, and so it wasn't me a bridge. And so we, we started with, we're gonna put a culvert in, with, so the contractor could give us stuff back, and then emergency vehicles could use that also. And then it developed again, we're like, well, we're at that point, let's just do a one lane road detour. But now we still need some time at the beginning and the end of the project, the, to have a full closure in two weeks. We're hoping for two weeks in July and two to four weeks in November. That, that really, because we're raising that bridge three feet. And you're putting in a detour, start, you now have, try to get traffic over that with the grade separation that we have. It, it's, it's gonna be difficult, but if we, we give them some closure, we give them, even if it's two weeks. Get that thing done and get out of there and get it all back open. So that, that's kind of the concept of what, what we're looking for, I want to have consensus of, you know, we, we talked to. Uh, Cameron, who was, was Skritner, I think, uh, who was the public works director over in, in, at, for Morrell County. And then now they have a, a new, and I spoke to that gentleman also, and he was, he was in favor of whatever, but I hadn't talked to him besides him. So, uh, we're just trying to figure out, yeah, that's a long detour route to stay, you know. You know, to stay on a highway that. And we understand, and so we're trying to find solutions, and we, we've gotten to this point, which was.
It's better than the initial.
Complete closure to just a couple of weeks at both ends of the project, and this will be in twenty twenty-four, is what we're talking. So we have plenty of time to figure this out, make everybody as.
This was not twenty-three.
It, it'll be, it'll be in twenty-three, and that, that was, that's where our money is, so we'll bid in twenty-three. But with the stuff that the contractor is gonna have to acquire, for some reason, they don't have big beans on the shelf like they just. Bring him in to make artwork, so, so, um, they give them about six months to get all their stuff. So they can, they got a big staging there at that Wyatt Park, I think that's Wyatt or White Park, that's right, it's quote unquote Park, not Park. Um, they pull out right next to the bridge, and so, uh, that's, that's where we're at. So we, we, we are going to need, we're going to need at least a minimum of two weeks that they were raising that grade. There's just no way to get for that short period of time to get people around, cause there's just such a, height, three feet. Lot of, lot of material, lot of movement and stuff.
Dewey?
Yes.
Comments?
I have not seen design yet or plans, um, there are options, but. Uh, closing that road, I, I think is gonna cause ODAT a pile of grease. But that's, that's just my opinion, from the people I've talked to and stuff, they're not, they're not happy at all with the, with the road closure.
We're, we're trying to mitigate it the best we possibly can, but it, it's a bridge in the canyon. And there's no good way around it. Dewey should be happy, I mean, going from three months down to about four.
Yeah.
So the bridge is failing, so, yeah, we'd like to get it done, we'd like to use, I mean, we have to get it done. We keep adding more and more to the project, we always risk that it gets done or not. If the budget scares, and we see coming our way, it, it does concern me about getting this through, so. I don't, I don't like it either, I mean, is there options with the county, they'll get the Caius Canyon Road, I mean, that's up for local traffic. I know it's way restricted, the bridge up there, but it's less of a detour.
Which canyon?
The Caius Canyon.
Caius Canyon can't be used, be, because the bridge in the bottom of Caius is, is, uh, it's been closed.
Well, um.
I was gonna say, the only other option would be buttermilk through Loona, wouldn't it? That would be ugly.
But the, but the Mor, the Morrell County section of buttermilk is a one lane road. Up through the, up through the gorge from Vanscoy's up to the Gillon County line is, that's a, that's a one lane road, which wouldn't work good for freight traffic.
So when, when the bridge washed out, how'd you guys manage to get to it? Five years ago.
Do you remember Dewey?
When the bridge washed.
Uh, that, I, I couldn't tell you at this time. That, that never came up in conversation with those people, so I don't know.
Didn't do any longer, so I don't know how we did that and how we managed to.
I mean, it sounds to me, this will be the unpopular opinion, but look.
Gotta be.
This is critical infrastructure, and sometimes in the end, that means a little bit of inconvenience. I think my concern would be making sure that people who are potentially going to be impacted have plenty of notice. To think about how they might approach their daily needs during those periods of time, so. At least on my perspective, being really clear about when those windows are gonna be, that we're not saying, oh, it's June, and it ends up being in the middle of harvest. Or something that's really, um, problematic, um.
Would that be, cause it's not actually there yet.
It'll be, it'll be in, uh, October, so that story said, it's gonna be in October. And then we have an in-water work window, which is from July fifteen to September thirty. So we can only be there from July to September as it is.
Yeah.
So, so, like I said, if we could get a couple of weeks in July to get this, get things built and stuff around, and then a couple of weeks in September. To raise that grade up three feet, then that's, that's really what we need to get this thing done, believe me, I don't want it. I'd love to make everybody happy, and we don't, we don't do anything, we let all the traffic through, just, I, to build something. And that's where we started with, with the detour bridge, that was six hundred thousand dollars to a million dollars, to build around environmental. You know, more, that's just more disturbance in that stream, and that we're trying to avoid for cost and impacts, so.
The alternative is the bridge washes out again, and then they're out more than two.
If we get there when we get there.
Controlled, you don't know when it's gonna happen and.
I lost the car in the flood right there.
I mean, my, my, uh, I mean, I, I just don't see any way around it. Um, I think our, like I said, uh, harvest in particular is. That is really the time that can't be disrupted, or should, we would, should, would try to.
So what is that, what is that range, harvest?
July, July. Um, but I think, you know.
I was gonna say, Leah, what is your?
Notice that.
Yeah.
That was, you know, I, I think they.
I said, Dan, I sent you the email, the most recent email with the list of people that Dewey was concerned about, so you can review that. That was just current, as you thought through everybody.
Yeah, so, I mean.
And he does not have harvest on there, um, uh, he's got fertilizer and spraying and stuff that he was talking about. Like harvest, but then there'd be an issue.
Yeah, it's a pretty critical bridge.
So basically, just like, we, we plan on, last, sorry, I didn't mean to tell you on. Blasting it with, we want everybody to know what's going on, we're gonna have message boards up, we'll have notifications out there. Got two years to let everybody know what's coming, so that, I mean, like I said, it's not happening next week. We got plenty of time to allow everybody to know of the inconvenience, and I understand, and don't like it any more than anybody else. Um, but we, believe you, that is, we have, that's been talked about over and over, especially after my conversation with Dewey was, uh. Um, if we're gonna have any closures, everybody in the dog needs to know.
Yeah, and I think, I guess, our, is my request would be, once you have. Your contractor in place and you're developing that timeline, the sooner that we can sort of start partnering on the communication strategy. Even if it's direct mailing even, I mean, we, the county has the ability to do, say, even a direct mailer to everybody who lives within Gillon County. To let them know, I mean, we can do those kinds of things and use some county resources to just make sure that at least people are aware. And then, I know public, this is not convenient, but you have to look at the broader, long-term impact. And in order to support all the other things we are doing, roads are sort of critical to get in and out of here, and so this is part of the infrastructure. And sometimes that means a little bit of inconvenience, so we just ask for your patience, and we're gonna do the best we can to make sure that everyone's aware.
And one more thing for timeline, just as far as how we, you know, when we would know, so the contractor was a bid, bid in, in October. It's more likely we won't, those proceed will happen late December, early January, our kickoff meeting will probably happen in February. Where we tell them to have a schedule, so we won't know anything, the schedule until February, early March. Win that timeframe.
Twenty twenty-four.
Of twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
That's, that's just to give you a timeline, when you, we could come to you and say, here's the dates.
Got it. Well, I think in general, we can start, starting spreading the word, and when folks hear about it and are upset about it, explain. Yeah, I think your contact information is put on the website. Yeah, I think your contact information is put on the website.
It's Dan.
Put that on the website.
There's suggestions. And if you guys want to propose an emergency route that would be public to know about road users, you're welcome to do that.
Okay. Yeah, we will. Yeah, maybe Delaney make a note that we need to just flag that for Gary and Chris and have them. We may be sending our sheriff office to connect with you guys, once you know timelines and stuff like that.
Exactly. Yeah, you know, like the Dell stand, you know, bridge shut down for like most of the winter and very inconvenient.
Yeah.
Closest route we have is the dam. And so we literally have, there's an emergency they drive across the bridge.
Um, any questions? Any questions from the public? Did you have anything else, Leah, that you wanted?
Um, I just was gonna add that they probably should come back in Moro County or we're gonna be searched on the other side.
Right. You'll have to figure that.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not very long part of their board. There is a no man's land.
Judge Joe in this group, um, next month I could.
That's sure.
Yeah, but you want Moro County.
Moro. Judge Joe's in Sherman County.
Oh, and I could do that again. I've already reached out to them.
It's gonna be, this is gonna be Jim Dory's.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it gets confusing because Sherman County's courthouse is in Moro.
Yeah.
Which is separate from Moro County. Um, so that's not, it's a common, common mistake. Are we going to Moro County or? For again.
For giving the big little area.
Yeah. Um, yeah, that's a good suggestion, Leah. It may just have to be that emergency services come out of Moro County for that portion.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, it, it, with that front, you know, back and forth, want everybody to know. Everybody.
Yeah. Because Murphy's Law is that.
People that don't know that are gonna get yelled at.
Yeah.
Okay, that's gonna be their fault, because they don't know, because we're gonna do everything we can to make sure everybody.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, the other thing that we could probably do, maybe um make a note, Delaney, is we can use the, the we use this during the um, the eclipse, but I think the sheriff's office alert system can also send out um, that where everybody gets their texts and stuff. We may be able to do that like the week before the closure or the week of the closure, just to remind folks that that road is gonna be closed.
And I've talked to the city and they're, they're gonna put it on their website.
Somebody's coming from Happy.
What's that?
They would like to know they could go through I own and save on the sixty-four.
That's right. Ahead of time.
Yeah, that was the kind of ask the uh, not official routes around.
Yeah, we, Miranda was saying we can add stuff to our website.
Excellent.
And I think maybe, once you've had the conversation with Moro County.
Yeah.
Them communicating that as well will be important, because yeah, there are people coming our direction. It's a long ways to drive to then have to turn around and backtrack, so.
Yeah, and the plan, the plan also would be to get message boards out there as soon as possible. So who, people that are driving that route on a regular basis, even though we all ignore them. Um, at least it's up there and you can say, road closed these dates in July or.
Yeah, they need to know the head you have and it says road closed to Gillon County.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Divert.
Yeah, now there's a website up currently about.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, we had this one, yes. There's a site up currently.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other ones, so under design, so it's actually the most.
I don't know if design will get posted, because the people really don't necessarily care about the design. They care about, because they're gonna know that.
Yeah.
They might know a little bit about it, but.
Yeah, I think once you have your timelines, if you could share that link with our staff and then we'll just make sure, you know, our chambers are great resources as well that can help sort of spread that word. And we have some community partners that are.
Let everybody in there talk about it. Everybody that I know to know.
Um, any other questions or uh, bits of input that folks would like to have? Well, we have ODOT here.
You okay, Dewey?
No, yeah, everything's good.
I will, I will bring up one thing. I'm also the project leader for the ADA stuff, so if there's a question on that, you can come here and answer, but I will, I will wake stuff up and make you believe. No, just kidding.
I, I do have a question about it. How, what is, what's the target for ending?
Well, well.
Or have you already passed it?
Well, I answered, yes, we're past it.
Let's have me on schedule.
Well, yeah, it's, that's right, exactly. Right, exactly on schedule, but not completely noticed. Um, they're, they're a little bit behind on some of the ramps, but they're, I, I can't remember exactly what they're, if they're gonna get them all done, because we, the way we had is, is we released. We, we did the project. We had pride, um, ramps that were able to be released, because there were no, no environmental stuff, no storage stuff, no Archie stuff, no utility stuff. You know, so we could say, here, Mr. Contractor, go build these, but we're not gonna give you these until a certain date. Well, those got a little bit delayed, so they're a little bit behind schedule. Um, so the plan is by the time the snow hits that they're out of here, we're not coming back.
Got it.
Can I promise that? No.
But that is the goal.
That is the goal.
Okay.
And then they're headed over tomorrow.
But we are in Congress, so the snow could fly at any time.
Yeah.
Just be aware. Okay, um, any other questions? Anybody have questions about downtown too? Oh, Les?
Judge Campbell. Uh, Les, we're at Rock Creek. While Dan's here and maybe hopefully Dewey's on the line, may I ask a somewhat related question?
I'm sure. Go ahead.
Um, um, the bridges overall in the county, and I'm kind of thinking in my mind of the one at Rock Creek proper here that I cross almost daily, uh, where Cedar Springs Road goes into Barnett Road. And the need that, for that having to be repaired rather substantially of late. Um, what's the, i- is there a listing that ODOT makes available to, to the county or that the county has itself? Of the status of all of the bridge inspections that have been done in the county? In other words, what the status of all the bridges are? And Dewey, what's the, what are we looking at here in terms of actually getting the Rock Creek Bridge at Rock Creek repaired over this next year or so?
We get, our bridges get inspected. Um, they, it's on a, it's on a schedule. Um, I have all the bridge inspection reports. And we've actually uh had, Anderson Perry has, has looked at getting us on the HBRR bridge replacement list again for that Barnett Bridge. But I will, I will follow up on that, find out what uh, uh, what they've got, information they've got to date when I get back.
Judge, I, I would, uh, thank you, Dewey. I, I just think, uh, the reason I raise that is obviously the the bridge at Rock Creek is really deteriorating and I think it might be becoming somewhat of a safety problem. I'm sure Dewey's aware of all that and perhaps the road committee itself is too. But i- I think it's really important for the court to be taking a, a little bit more serious look at the status of the bridges in the county and, and kind of going from there. I'll, I'll shut up. Thank you.
Thanks, Les. All right, any other questions? If not, you, public, you've been put on notice, twenty twenty-four, expect some load closure, look for more information. Thank you guys so much for coming out.
Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, um, let's move into six point three, Condon Food Pantry update. You guys, you can come up here or you can stand, whatever. Sometimes people think the owl's a little too intimidating. Um, so we'll take it either way. And then Delaney is sharing. You don't wanna share? Wanna share? Okay.
Ted, um, I'm still standing. That way I can pigeon better.
Perfect.
Because I've only done, this is only my second presentation ever in my entire life, so. We're gonna hope.
It'll be just fine. So.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Kalana Mora and I am the Condon Community Food Pantry Coordinator. Here with me today is Teddy Hinneren, one of my board members. And we are here today to give a status report of where the food pantry is at and what we have been doing and what we would like to be doing. So uh, I've got this slide here of the, since October first, twenty twenty-one to September thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, Condon Community Food Pantry through a grant slash budgeted amount of money received from Gillon County Court, has spent all ten thousand dollars on the energy assistance uh, program plus an additional sixteen hundred dollars for a total of eleven thousand six hundred dollars. Next slide, please. Since twenty twenty, electric and water rates have not increased. As of today, I do not know if they're projected to increase in twenty twenty-three. Propane has continually gone up since twenty twenty and is projected to go over three dollars per gallon this winter. I've not been able to obtain a price from Devon Oil as of today, although we can all assume it's going to go up. And I was informed by a uh Devon uh oil customer that they're paying approximately five dollars a gallon right now. So those prices are gonna go up. Uh, in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two uh year, the food pantry provided assistance to twenty-nine families at four hundred dollars each. And that's a total of eleven thousand six hundred. We were granted the ten thousand dollars from Gillon County, which means the Condon Community Food Pantry paid sixteen hundred dollars of that amount ourselves, which fortunately we had that. Otherwise, we'd have to cut those families off and they would be without resources. We were granted the ten thousand dollars, um. And if we were to serve those same twenty-nine families next year, uh, although we're basically anticipating that that number is gonna grow because of the rising fuel costs, the Food Pantry Board has, is proposing to raise the allotment per family to five hundred dollars. So if we were to serve that same twenty-nine families at five hundred dollars, that would uh, be fourteen thousand five hundred dollars, which is an increase of forty-five hundred dollars just for the energy assistance alone. Um, and like I said, we're anticipating either the number's gonna grow or we're gonna have to cut people off and they're gonna be without resources in the middle of winter, more than likely. And uh, children being cold. So this is just a few uh small statistics regarding Condon that I came up with. And um, a lot of that was kind of shocking to me. I've only been in Condon for a little over five years now, so this was really kind of interesting to me. Food security, you ask? In all reality, a small number of Americans are food secure. The majority of our nation live day to day as far as food goes. They go to the grocery store every day to get the food that they might need over the next twenty-four hours. The Condon Community Food Pantry tries to provide at least a week's worth of food to each family, even though we're only asked to supply a three to five-day supply. We here in Condon try to supply a little bit extra, just because we are out away from most grocery stores. Uh, this slide shows the percentage change in retail food pricing, July or January to July. As you can see, our food has increased in price dramatically. And it's really increasing. Next one's, yeah.
Yeah.
Condon Community Food Pantry has shown an increase in the number of households that it serves every month on average. Over the past twelve months, we have served an average of fifty-four families per month and an average of a hundred and eight people each of those same twelve months. That is approximately fifteen percent of the population of Condon. That is huge. So you've been sitting here asking yourselves, why is she giving us all these statistics regarding food insecurity and food costs? To be honest, it is because the food pantry is in desperate need of assistance, both in bodies and finances. We want to grow our service, which is my whole uh, passion. However, uh, we cannot do that in the tiny Sunday school room that the Catholic Church allows us to use, which we are completely and ever so grateful for. However, we have missed out on opportunities to grow because we are in such a small facility. We've had opportunities to gain coolers for produce. We've uh missed so many, so many opportunities. In the past two years uh, that I've had the pleasure of being the Food Pantry Coordinator, I have seen the amount of food that is being offered to the pantry shrink by, by about half. Therefore, the food pantry has been trained to do additional food drives as well as purchasing some additional food and supplies for the people of Condon. Our supplier, Capco, has received grants to be able to purchase additional food as well. Therefore, we have been trying extremely hard to order as much food as possible to have out in our pantry so that in case that one week's worth of food is not enough for a family, they can come and get additional food. In addition to the very small space that we have, we do not have the ability to maintain the proper temperatures for compliance with the rules that we are supposed to follow. In the summer, if it's a hundred degrees outside, it is near that inside that little tiny room. In the winter, if it's below freezing outside, it is near freezing inside our facility. We are continually asking other community members if they have space to store produce from when we received our product on Thursday morning until distribution on the following Monday. As if we just kept it in that room, it would rot in that amount of time because of improper storing temperatures. If you have not figured it out by now, this is a passion of mine. I hate to see people hungry. I recently quit my job, mostly because of health reasons, but because the food pantry was not getting the attention that it deserved. This is my full-time job now. The food pantry is my passion. And the Food Pantry Board needs more people to become active. Um. And I'm trying to spend more of my time trying to figure out how to grow our service. If we were only to be able to rent a facility, which really is not reasonable. Um. It would be hard to pay for because we have no um current income. We have no income. Yeah, we, we don't have anything. We would have to obtain grant money or be gifted funds in order to rent a space. Again, if we could locate a suitable space. However, next slide. We could grow into something more like this. With the financial assistance and grants, we can move and become more like this and serve more people. We cannot do it with the finances or location that we have currently. We need the county and the city to step up and help the Condon Community Food Pantry become what it has the potential to become. We need help to either build or con- or accumulate a space large enough to accommodate and serve the community within food compliance guidelines. We need help in locating and writing grants to help with the operation of our growing facility as time times grow worse in our nation and more and more people are dependent upon local food pantries. We are in desperate need of trying to locate people that would be willing to be active board members as we just don't have the people right now to do everything that is needed to be done. We need to try and find someone that would at the very least, teach us how to write grants or preferably someone that would be willing to write them for us. This is the conclusion of our report and proposal to you today and hope that we can work more closely with you in the, or in order to better serve the people of Condon. Any questions?
In your energy assistance, those uh families that we have provided assistance for, how much are they, are they applying to Capco as well?
Yes.
So this, this is just in addition to what they would be getting from capital, which is covering what they need then. Correct. Food pans is stepping in.
So everybody that I help do intakes for, um, we refer them to additional resources. So like, I'm helping people apply for this broadband program to see if they can get a reduced price, to help people apply to Capco. I help people apply to, for instance, even Umatilla-Moral Housing Authority, um, just anything and everything that could possibly help in any different way, even if it's not. Just anything and everything that could possibly help in any different way, even if it's not specifically energy. So and frontier veggie or eggs and.
And she sends them my way.
Yeah, of course. Everybody goes to the food pantry to get whatever they can. Um if they're not already receiving SNAP, we refer them to try to apply to see if they. Can get that as well. Um just. Yeah, every opportunity that I know of that they could apply for. And in the past year, uh. A lot due to the board working more closely with me um and a lot of things that we're doing. Capco has now. Qualified us to be considered an emergency pantry. Because I put out there, I'm available basically twenty four seven. If anybody needs any third, they call, get ahold of me one way or another. I go down and meet them if I'm available. If I'm not available, I contact a board member and they go and get food. Um so that was a a huge thing for us to be uh qualified as an emergency pantry.
So one, uh I have a couple of questions. One, maybe this is actually a question for Teddy and. Can you kind of walk us through? On the energy assistance case, so. There's the funds that the county is providing that the food um pantry is distributing. There is the Capco sort of lie heap funds. And then does Columbia Basin also have?
Helping.
A Helping Hearts. Okay. And how, so are those? Three separate applications? Is that? Like are the three partnering? So like it's a one-stop application and like the funds come from three plate like how? So has there ever been discussion about how to coordinate that?
Yes, and so actually I'm. I try and work with the families to do the. The Food Pantry application. And so. If we qualify through our application, then I can talk with um the Helping Hearts. And so basically, if we qualify here. They are. Taking my word for it that they. Should be able to qualify for the Helping Hearts program. And so, so I then contact. Columbia Basin's person, Janelle, and say, I have a a client that. I would like to refer to the Helping Hearts program and ask if. They can qualify for that. So. So if I say they qualify like financially and and whatever our parameters are. Then they look and if they've. If they've had basically communication with Columbia Basin saying, I'm having a problem and haven't. Haven't just kind of pushed it out there and not paid, but at least communicated, paid. Anything at all, obviously couldn't pay the whole bill, but we're still trying, then. They generally qualify. Um they don't have to fill out another application with them. Through Capco, we do have to fill out another application. Um. The, it's basically the same qualifications, but I do help families fill those out and get it. Sent in to Capco while I'm helping them fill out. The food pantry ones. So anybody who asks me to help them fill out for Capco, I'm more than happy to. Do that and help them get it into us.
And then in terms of the actual benefit, so it looks like the food pantry one. Is sort of a standard, am I correct that it's like a standard four hundred?
Yes.
Is it per family?
Per household that year. That's yeah.
And then what sort of what are the benefit levels for like the Helping Hearts and the is the Capco one?
The Capco one is. Another level. I couldn't really tell you the actual, they have some sort of a.
Exciting scale.
Yeah, it goes per like per household of one. Two, three, four, I think, you know, it it kind of depends how many children they have or dependents, whatever.
Got it.
And they, they provide a number, which I don't know the actual number based on. Their levels. And so they can help a family. Right now with. Energy. Meaning. Whoever it goes to, it could go to Columbia Basin, it could go to Devon Oil, it could go to propane. Um they can also help somebody with. Water. Um and that is, I know that they do have a new contract in place with the city of Condon. Believe they might have one in place for Arlington. So those can. Then also help for water services through Calco. Um. Something else I think, I don't know if I answered your question.
Well, I think you answered it. I was just looking at if there was an opportunity. For families to, I think anytime they're able to offer, especially families that are under stress um. One-stop shops where they're not having to hop from agency to agency. And so I was just curious. What that collaboration has looked like.
Yeah, so sometimes families have already contacted Capco before they contact me, so. Maybe they've already done that application, but I, yeah, so I. I try to make a one-stop shop.
Is Capco, since we have a board number of Capco sitting here with us, is Capco? Actively, um I mean, obviously they're a great partner on the food side, but are they actively like referring their lie heap? Applicants over to you. So like, say somebody doesn't go directly to you and they're aware of Capco because maybe they came to us from. War County or something and they were already familiar. Is Capco saying, hey, you need to call Teddy in Gillum County?
Now that I don't.
Okay, so that may be something to just maybe put on your to-do list of like. While we still have Sherry on the board, making that connection so that. We make sure that folks are exhausting all of the and that I like. I like when we approach things as there's no wrong door. And so like here are the other people that can help and making those connections. Um. On the food staff. You had mentioned that the food coming in was, I think you said halved from when you started. Can you talk a little? Is that? Because there was this huge COVID interest and money coming in and then suddenly that's dropping off? Or is there something else?
There's a food shortage.
Okay.
There is a food shortage and matter of fact, um. It was. August. We hardly had any frozen foods whatsoever. No meat. We received no meat. And people here in Condon are, that's their main thing. They want the meat. They, we've got. A stockpile of dried beans and canned beans and so forth and so on, which are great protein sources. But a lot of people don't know how to really use them and they like meat. Um I'm working with uh Oregon State University uh. To provide some pre-made bags of food. Uh they provide the recipe. They put all of the ingredients that are in the food pantry, which are almost all of the ingredients for that particular recipe. Um. And in trying to teach people more how to use. Say lentils or rice or, you know, something like that um. Or just red kidney beans or pinto beans or whatever, you know, as as a protein versus an actual meat protein. And um I think that that program is actually went very well. Um all this last time that we did it. They provided sixteen bags and all sixteen disappeared very rapidly.
Right.
So that's been a really good partnership that I've grown over the past six months. And um. That's, yeah, that's um it's it's scary because. You know, we're trying everything we can. I even actually hooked up my trailer, took my pickup. And went to Pendleton because Capco said we don't have a driver, we can't get you guys any food. I loaded my pickup up with my trailer and I went to Pendleton and I picked up three pallets of food and brought it back. Because I was not gonna let this this town go a month without the food pantry. We couldn't. I mean, it it just was not feasible. I I couldn't, I couldn't fathom it. And. Like I said, this has become an extreme passion of my own and. I can see the need for it to grow into something much larger than what it is right now. We don't have the storage space to be able to sort it. When I do get food in, it goes off the shelves so quickly. And then, you know, people that can't make distribution date or forgot it or whatever and call me the next day. Their pickings are very slim. Because most everything goes out that same day.
So let's talk about your facility needs. Do you have? A place in mind? Have you thought about what? I various times you've talked about like maybe in seeing we an interesting location and.
And that did settle and somebody else um. Has that now? However. Yeah. However, we heard that he did not want to use it for his original desires, that he wanted to use it for more community. Minded activity. So um. The board member that's kind of heading this up is out hunting right now. So. So contacting that facility has kind of been put on the burner until after the thirteenth. And our other facility, um. They have, their board has not returned any numbers. Renting a facility is just. So hard because unless we, because we we'd have to be grant funded. Um or gifted the money to be able to rent and then you'd have the power and the water and possibly internet because. The business downstairs, I don't know if they would let us piggyback off of their internet. Um but because I, we've got a laptop that we report things to to Capco. I can do those at home if necessary. You know, it's not an absolute necessity. Um but that facility would be amazing for us. Um but. There again, you know, there's.
Our own system.
Yeah.
Brings through our computers. So, okay. So it sounds like. To sort of uh capture that there is an ask for the court to look at some additional funding. To provide energy assistance and. Uh. Address the food shortage that you're talking about.
And just trying to get some ideas, you know, if you guys have suggestions for for the board. You know, of people that we can contact. You know, to to help us grow how we serve.
Yeah, on the um on the facilities part, I mean, definitely please stay. Connected with the court's office and our staff on this. We, you would, the food pantry would definitely qualify for competitive grants once you have, like if you need funds to. Secure and remodel a building, for instance, or put in freezer space, all those kinds of things. That we already have in place a competitive grants program that you would, because of your nonprofit status, definitely be eligible for. Um but it sounds like we gotta get a plan in place first for you to make, know what you're actually asking for.
So yeah, where, where would our facility move into? So currently, we're. In a small room. Of the um. Church. Church. Parish hall. Um. Yes, we have no control over the heat or the air conditioning. Yeah, so it kind of, we have a register that either heat comes in or. Obviously, they don't air condition.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And we just. I've literally seen our produce rot overnight.
Yeah.
In a day because it's so, so hot in there.
Mm-hmm.
And so we've started reaching out to other people in in the the community. I even took ten cr- ten cases of grapes and put them in my basement one weekend. I, I mean, it is. It is what it, what it is. And we are very, very grateful that that we have something at all.
Mm-hmm.
Um and. The Catholic Church does not, they do not charge rent to us. They do not charge us an additional. You know, energy piece, so we don't pay for water, we don't pay for.
That's, yeah, yeah, helps you really run.
So it it does. It it allows us to run. It's just that we can see that if we could find people that know how to write grants. And be able to locate a lot possibly or a building that's already built to remodel. Whichever, you know, um we've even talked about just finding a lot and putting a modular on it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but we've. I don't know the resources.
Got it, okay.
And that's why I'm reaching out to the county, the city, the chamber. To be able to help me find the resources to be able to grow. The food pantry into what I can see it can become.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
On the um. Just as a reminder to the court, in case you're unaware, we have an existing. Um memorandum of understanding with both food pantries. That provides them a guaranteed annual funds that come out of our general fund. That current number for both food pantries is ten thousand a year. Um the, the agreements, I went back because I saw you guys were on the agenda just to double check what. Um because some of our agreements have automatic increases built into them. These ones do not. They, but they do say if the food pantry is um are in need of an additional funding. They need to come give us notice basically and make that request. And then if the court decides that it it wants to increase the funding, then we just need to amend. Those original agreements. And so that is a question I would put to the two of you. Are you interested, given? What's happened in the broader economy with inflation and supply chains and things like that? It sounds like these funds are definitely. Needed um.
And this is our, we're coming back to ask.
Yeah, so what is the timeframe for the the contract and fiscal year?
Um so.
Would have gotten ten thousand dollars for.
So they would have just gotten or will soon have an extra ten of the the ten thousand for the upcoming fiscal year. Um and then the contract or the agreement stipulates that they need to let us know by February and that's for our own internal budgeting. So we can adjust the numbers upward if the court decides to do that. And so what I would potentially anticipate and maybe suggest is if the court's intention is to provide additional funds. That we move forward with amending those agreements. So those are in place and then the budget comes still in and I have. Already, we already understand your intentions, so we can plug those numbers in. And then maybe if the idea is that, yeah, this is the direction we're going, we could say even to both food pantries. That if in the next, the existing fiscal year, if you run out of money, you know, say March comes around.
Fight price.
And you have run out of money, that we are open to them coming back and us filling the gap for those three months or whatever is left. Um within that is, does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, I mean, I. I got the rest. I understand food costs.
Yeah.
So I mean, I.
Well, we all go to the grocery store, so we all understand.
We all, we all get that. So, I mean, I, I just uh. Would like to. Ask a few more questions down the road, do thinking about it.
Yeah.
I want to make sure. In the timeframe I'm still here, that they're getting the funds they need and not, we're just not putting a small band-aid on. But but to actually. That's Mrs. Potter. Or Mrs. Watkins. Who'd I do that to the other day?
We're going with me.
Taylor Davidson, I did it to Taylor the other day.
And. There's. That possibility. Well, it's not a possibility. We are asking um. ODHS. That, you know, the SNAP. Services are currently getting a little boost. And they are getting some additional. Like COVID funding, I guess, is what we're calling it. So. Current. Could be a shortfall. Basically. Yes, we are looking at how do we help? In the event.
Yeah, that those funds go away.
Yeah, and they are going to, you know, that they're. The additional COVID funding is. Going away. So. How is that gonna look? And. We're already providing service through food pantries in both ends of our community. And. Yeah, just the fact that. Gillum County. You know, we're, we're small communities, we are helping. Assist.
So it sounds like um. Our feedback to you is that the ten thousand. You know, it's obviously offers for this existing fiscal year which started July one. So it sounds like the court is open, once you exhaust that existing ten thousand and this. Goes for Arlington as well, if you guys find you're in this position.
So yes.
If you exhaust that ten thousand, that we um are open to. Filling the gap for the existing year. Under the memorandum of of understanding, we can modify the amounts. Um, as long as you've given us notice by February, which you have, you put us on notice. Um, and so I think what we would do, it should be a simple amendment and. I think it might be helpful to learn from you guys or have a specific request of how much more you think you need to meet the demand. And obviously, it was like forty five hundred on the energy assistance, but that doesn't even touch the food side, so there's. An ask, like, have to have that in writing. That then I can bring back to the court and say, does this look right? And would you like to see an amendment for this amount, basically? Um, and then uh we would, assuming the court is um on board with that, we would amend those memorandums. Of understanding so that your sort of guaranteed annual contribution is needing that new sort of level of need. And then that just becomes part of our um general fund budget. Um, so we just budget it and then you make the request and we send you a check. Um, but um it sounds like that is in terms of your existing operations where you currently are and just meeting the demands of. Uh, families that are are using it. I think that's where the court, I'm hearing the consensus is for now. On the building side. I think we have talked often about trying to help organizations find grant writers, things like that. Um, one of the things perhaps the court could look at um as part of our competitive grants. Is specifically saying that we will pay for grant writers and having people apply for those funds so that they can actually. Because as we've run into before, we've got a lot of different organizations that need grant writers and. Like our education grant writers are different from what our community builders might be, from what are, you know. Um, and so. Sort of providing the funding and and to the extent we can connecting with subject matter experts on those particular grant streams. Probably makes more sense than, we kicked around like, should we hire a grant writer internally, but the issue is. We hire one and then they need to understand all of the state grants that we apply for and all the community grants that are. You know, it's it's just too much knowledge base for one person, I think, to to successfully master. But we are interested in trying to support grant um. Funding in terms of getting you the expertise you need to go after outside grants, so. I feel like there we have.
All entities to be able to acquire all available funds that they can.
Yeah, everything that's out there, right, they get it.
Got it. Um, yeah, that is one thing to note. Um, and Delaney sort of sent this out to community partners, but they're, who's putting that on?
It looks like it's Rural Development Initiatives and part there with Kelly Nonprofit Consulting.
So Rural Development Initiatives is having, it's a five part series? So it's a five part series on grant writing for nonprofits and so, and. We've been trying to circulate it to people we thought might be interested in that, if it hasn't arrived to you or we sent it someplace else. But it may be worthwhile as well. To kind of at least get away of the land of where you would even go find a grant writer and. There may be some other people who are on that seminar who may be good connections and raise their hands and say, actually, we use so and so kind of thing. Um, where I have a feeling with some of these specific uh niches that. It may be word of mouth, like you may hear from another food pantry somewhere who says, oh, we have a great person that we use kind of thing. Who may have the bandwidth to be able to help multiple entities, that's I hope.
Grant program was, it's geared towards small rural nonprofit, so it's really towards helping you guys. Because we don't have a lot of resources or access those resources.
Right. I thank you guys for your time, I'm Mr. Boy and Led Arlington.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. And keep us posted on the facilities piece. As well. Do you wanna take a break? Okay, we're gonna take a quick break. For the commissioners.
Thanks for having us.
Unless you wanna learn all about food pantries and cultural.
We're ready.
We have the Aled, we're recording, we have Sam. Okay, it is eleven forty-five and we are back in session and we'll move into six point four, which is the Arlington Food pantry updates. Do you ladies want to stand there or come up? Whichever your most. That's fine, looks like uh. The Aled's really loving Teddy right now, but I think it'll find you if you keep talking, so.
So I'm Carrie Cowan, I'm a researcher at Arlington Health, I've been there for ten years. And she was our secretary and she did all the paperwork.
Paperwork, ordering food.
Yeah.
All of the things.
So um, Terry put together. Didn't wrap this for us. Um, so I would just read that.
Yeah, we're housed in the Methodist church, we rent two rooms. We have five freezers. One we're bringing over. At the beginning of, so you know, we were short supplied on meat. So we ended up buying meat. And mainly hamburger, we have an outlet.
Yeah, I'd like to talk. Um, when COVID happened. Um, we actually lost household. And I think it's because so much assistance they were getting. They're still getting this. So on that end, things are good. That's um.
Got it.
Is the fear. Yeah.
Got it, okay, that is.
COVID started, I thought um. Okay, the shoe's really gonna drop with with heating systems. But it did the opposite. They're getting an awful lot of help from CO. So we've only helped five households. And um, usually I get a phone call, we've got a shut off notice. And in years past, it used to be they give a shut off notice and there was some time. Um, the person lived in our community and he would um. Go to this, down to the Arlington Library to see if they've made a payment by the time. And then um. But now, it's they have a little switch thing, switch importance.
Yeah, they just shut it off.
Is that for water or for?
No, for heat, for heat, yeah. But this year, we've only had um five households, we pay up to five hundred dollars, we raised that a few years ago. Because I was seeing he uh bills up to fifteen hundred dollars in Arlington. Because a lot of people. Just give me at the park. They don't have um. Heating system. They heat with space heaters.
Yeah.
And then they buy their home um as their.
Yeah, and they have no insulation, yeah.
And it's actually pretty horrible.
Yeah.
I know, I work with um. Thank, oh geez.
Yeah, they're okay.
Anyway, um. It's very cold in our home. And even with their with their heater, so it's a problem. We have a household with water. And gas assistance is way, way down. Because um. I don't think people have them anymore. Yeah, yeah. And we did raise our gas from twenty to forty.
Um, we get several people off the freeway. Oh, you know. We get transients.
And that's the next one.
Yeah.
With the emergencies. With the emergencies on street and port and we were getting. Not so much this summer, but the summer before, at the beginning of the pandemic. It was a zoo. It was just a zoo and it was like. What? And so we had a lot of people, people would hitchhike and then they would dump people that aren't. Um.
And then we'd get a whole town.
We get a whole town. Yeah, we also help with people that have had um, like with the ambulance, they pick up somebody. Um. And not. It was an emergency, but. They don't need to go to the hospital, so I'll. And we'll give them a knife. Because like the cars out of gas. I mean, there's just everything from A to C, from animal that comes off the freeway.
There was a couple the other day that they're in trailers, they were calling the trailer, I took the trailer. But uh, Gary, our great Gary Wagner, he's the president or chairman. And he talked to them and they were okay on food. And they had enough money to buy the um. Water. That's what they had. And they had, the guy had the tools to fix. And Gary is gonna go with him, make sure he has food enough and gas. So they can continue on their journey. But that's pretty much it, that's it.
And I always ask somebody. How was the last time you ate? It's surprising answer. But it is. So they're given um. Two dollars a person. What they. And if you need to go to a restaurant, then you would want to ten dollars or um. They can go to the grocery store. And my times are the ten, we go to the grocery store. But prayerfully. That was slowly, I don't know. Okay, we do have uh. I have a partner here with the. Nothing at church. And um, patrons. We had a little bit of office supply, of course, then just some part of the state. And food, we were doing really well on food. And then in March, we're not having any food. Like didn't we do that? And so I started calling around. And uh, the phone up the face. I mean, it's grown barny and then it was the. And and they were charging four dollars a pound. For the, for the doggy. You know. It's going to pop, but that's a really good source for them. And so we have to. Chickens, but then we say, we were getting. And so, did they help, we get stuff from the elves last year. We go through cat and tan speed. And they have actually donated beef and they cut down their price to us also. So they give us a deal. And they're really good to work for. With. So. Yeah. So right now, um, it would really be helpful. I talked to someone about having. Transportation. I was working on getting the driver just to pick up people. But that's not working too well, it's like hurting sheep. So. I just, and I talked to her and see if we could just be a wonderful place at the trailer park. And I think that they're really nice. And so um, because transportation is. And I, I really appreciate the elves, that's been very, very helpful. We did give beef from cat and tans. This has been the second year ago. Um. And. We were able to buy other food resources and spend a little grocery store. We try to do it as local as we can. Help with people.
And then. This was one of the things that we were really trying to mention is when the pandemic snap comes. Return back to normal, we're just really fearful of how many. People are gonna be hitting the food pantries. And then um. With our. Less and less. Things that are being provided to our food pantries, it's just really going to be. An economic hardship on the pantries. Without some additional assistance. And then just one of the other things that I wanted to point out was. Uh, for the Frontier Veggie RX program, which is really helping with food security. Um, I'm currently serving seventy-nine households and another hundred and ninety people. And that's all up Gillum County and I will say that it's. Um, a higher percentage in Condon than it is are in Arlington right now. Much higher, actually.
You know, we spent uh. At. Our busiest time, we had forty-three families. Which is almost a hundred people. And now we're down to about twenty, twenty-two.
Yeah, and I spent a lot of time at the trailer park and um. They go shopping. And I don't split their food stamps. And I know people are doing more of those things. And that's why they're not coming. Another thing I wanna say is um, Darren is raising the rent. Oh, yeah. Because a lot of people are starting to. Um. Um, the one that we, Ben and John, who's nineteen, twenty-seven, is in my forties.
She's a dancer, the trailer boy.
Yes. And he's also um, I know there's subsequent infection. And I. He's, he's turning the spaces into um. Get rest.
There's a lot of the, there's a lot of the. Infection workers for the renewable projects in the park.
Yeah. And one thing really positive about. We have some extra money, so not with a grant. But I just wanna mention that, there's a lot of debris around the trailer park. And so I was able to work with um, a company that. That was who they were. Anyway, his name is Rob. We purchased a um, a garbage bin. And he, he bought it and he filled up. And so people are using it, so that's awesome. And then he started asking me what we did, and so I told him. And so he went to his company and they got, um, don't even know. It's obviously not to go with these dairy animals or any other furniture.
Electronics or whatever.
He didn't say that. So.
That's the rule.
Yeah, those are the rules. Those are the rules.
The trouble we're having is people being able to catch them. People remembering each other. The day, even though it's out there. Um, every month. But we're very thankful for them being able to do this.
But this is a total disaster.
Yeah.
We're in the new.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're gonna hopefully get a chance to.
Should have gotten.
It's in my budget. Yeah, so I.
Yeah, it just goes through.
Generally, we usually have a letter to ask for it, so I need to get it out.
Okay, okay, so um.
Yeah, for both of you, there, once the court approves that that money is ready, as soon as we roll into the new fiscal year or so. It's really just making that connection with Teddy and it's a real simple customer acing process, so.
It's a really hard to do that way too. Um. Partner with organizations to get help for the park. And we did that last year, there was a lot of pipe leakage. And we partnered with the church and.
We paid for some pipe replacements.
Yeah. Yeah. So. Those are kind of things we do.
So I would just say, I mean, I think the same thing that we talked about with Condon would be. What our intention would be with you as well, that that new funding. For the current fiscal year is now available, but if you exhaust that before July one, I think. We're interested in trying to help fill that gap for you, so. Just if that happens, just reach out to Delaney and say, hey. The court said that they wanted to hear from us, we'd like to get back on the agenda and talk about what that looks like. Um, and we can just get you scheduled on the next, um, for your edification, we are going back and forth, so. The second meeting of every month is in Arlington. And so that way you don't have to come all the way to Condon to see us either, we can, we can accommodate, um. Um, and then the other piece as well is if you're feeling like the, the ten thousand that we originally agreed to is. Needing to be increased to meet, especially once some of these COVID um benefits start rolling off and if you see. That uptick in families who are suddenly like, hey, I actually need this again. Um, if you guys can kind of firm up numbers for us on what that would look like and then um. We can get that scheduled and I can get feedback from the commissioners, that sounds like where they wanna go and then it's just really getting. Those amendments agreed to by the court and then getting it into our budget for the next fiscal year, so.
The um, the eating part right now is what interests me. And there is some um wiggle room in our budget that um. Um. That might be.
I'm sure it will.
And I'm telling you, this is pretty simple, they just call me, they can talk about it. And um, they give us five hundred dollars a year. Yeah, families giving kickoffs. But it's really important that people understand, they don't want their electricity to be turned off, it would look a lot more expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're, they're embarrassed, so, but they're pretty agreeable and.
Does your electric provider have any kind of a program as well?
Yes, they have a uh. Free, uh, equal pay. And sometimes people just get in a kickoff and they just can't make it.
And it's not that, but you may have an assistance program, like Condon, we can apply for, no, not even CO, but just through the electric.
It sounds. What Pacific Power do they have besides the equal pay, do they have a program on it? Assist.
They, they have something, but when we ran out of energy money. Um, and I was really sweating. And um. I would tell people. Boom. You're on the CO board, please donate to us. I'm sorry. It goes directly to the people in our community.
So do you get a lot of that type of donation?
When I've been around and talked to different um people, I get donations.
Yeah. Do you guys take money from Waste Management? Do you guys reply to them?
Waste Management does donate directly.
Turkeys.
And we've been a bunch of turkeys.
And so did you.
Yeah, because last year Condon spent a thousand dollars on turkeys.
Yep, that's what it was.
Waste Management always over orders and purchases, there'll be a couple of times.
Yes, sometimes the employees just don't pick them up either, right?
We get the turkeys, the price don't come up. And we got quite a few last year.
Seventy.
And so I share. I, I share with daycare. We share with um.
Senior.
Senior deals. And we share with people that don't come, that I know.
Got it.
That isn't that generation there.
A lot of pride, yeah. Yeah.
We work with the churches, I find out. People that go to the churches that. We just hand it all out.
Pacific Power does have a bill of payment assistance program?
I think I'll look into that somewhere.
Go to the, I just went to pacificpower.net slash assistance. And um, it came up with Pacific Power, my account payments assistance program.
But I do know that people that come to me have. Reached the end of the rope. Yeah. There with CO. There with the, the. Equal pay to the power company. Um, yeah.
Well, great, it sounds like, and so follow us on the two, keep us posted on. How you're doing throughout the fiscal year, if it looks like you're gonna run short. Reach out to Delaney and we'll get you, or even reach out to Teddy and Teddy can make the connection with Delaney. Um, in terms of the upcoming fiscal year, um, the twenty-three, twenty-four, believe it or not, um. If that number needs to be adjusted, we have the same agreement that with you that we do with Condon, we just need to know that by February basically, so that when we go through our budgeting process, we're setting aside sufficient numbers. Um, and so if you guys are seeing that actually, yeah, we could use another five thousand, six, whatever that number looks like. Um, again, you can either just connect directly with Delaney or through Teddy. Um, and then it sounds like it also may benefit the two organizations to maybe think about. Maybe this could be even done through Teddy, um. Maybe think about checking in with each other a couple of times a year, because it sounds like.
Shared services would be a good thing.
Like sitting and looking and even in the. Presentation, you can't compare apples to apples, you can't really see, and I think I would like to get something from you that. That showed the differences, because there's some difference in programs, there's some differences in some things that happen like I eighty-four. But it looks like by presentation, me sitting here. They have less financial problems than Condon does, why? Condon doesn't pay any rent or pay any rent.
They don't have as many. They don't have as many families.
Things that we, like if I look at the families, I can't even make that comparison.
No, because they're serving approximately twenty households right now, fifty-four people and we're serving. Twice that, twice the least.
Yeah, but there's some shared services there that if we coordinate together.
Yeah, like the turkey thing, you get extra turkeys and then maybe Condon needs some, or somebody has a lead on a good meat connection and.
Because. During the contact with the. And they have so much, so much meat to do with.
Oh, wow, so.
Yeah.
Especially if something that we can share, you know. I need to go in.
But there are other resources.
Great, so it sounds like, um. The one other sort of takeaway or key thing to put on, Teddy will put this on your plate, is if you can help facilitate between these two groups. Maybe just a periodic, you know, obviously those have a lot on your plates, but I'm just thinking there may be. You may be able to help each other, um, just being able to share, like, here's what we ran into and we found this. Um, connection that may be useful to you too. Kind of helping connect those two Teddy, so whether that is a quarterly check-in and one of them being when you come to see us every year. Um, or something, but I, I just think that. The spaces that you're working in, even though they're slightly different, because eighty-four looks different than, you know, um, here. That there's still some potential where one of you may learn something that could help the other and vice versa. So let's try to facilitate some conversation between the two, especially when you're running into something that maybe the other entity. Has um, a potential solution.
We talked about this last year, so let's make it happen this year.
Awesome, well, thank you for coming to see us and thank you for your passion and it's needed, so. I really appreciate it. Um, okay, let's move on, folks, uh, we are coming toward the end, uh, six point five is Spencer appointment. At Gillum County Cultural Trust Board Member Miranda, do you wanna just give a brief? Where we are and who's reached out on this one?
Um, so we received. Oh, actually a lady contacted us from the north and. Asking about connecting with some local partners to maybe. Offer some services, she wants to grow. Gourds, have children grow gourds and then turn them into musical instruments and kind of do that whole process. Um, but I, she didn't think she could get it done during this grant cycle, so now I've. Broke her into joining the corps.
Good job.
Fill in the waters and then, you know, she's new to the area, so maybe making some connections with people. Um, and then maybe down the road. The opportunity will arise for her, but for now. Um, Diana, uh, Wonderly, I think that's how you say her name. Um, is interested in joining for one year. Um, so actually with, with hers, we'll still need to.
Yeah.
I was jumping a bit short last time I said we already do, but.
Oh, we do.
We need to, from the north end.
The recommendation, even though it's short of the year, is to do to June thirtieth, so that the terms are.
Right.
So Miranda knows that on the thirtieth she needs to reappoint rather than. Exactly, we would like some consistency on terms, so.
And then some follow-up. The grant cycle ended on the third. We had seven applicants and they were fairly equal distribution. We had seven applicants and they were fairly equal distribution.
All good.
Yeah, there's some great stuff on there.
Yeah, it's a really interesting, people are getting creative, which is
So we got lots on the thirteenth. Uh, to go on the applications.
Right. Thanks for taking that on.
Yeah, it's been exciting to see.
And maybe Miranda, once they make those finding or funding decisions, if you could maybe just, it doesn't have to be long, but maybe just type up like who was awarded the general gist of what the project is. And then we could maybe just even include it under correspondence so that that's
Generates more interest.
Part of the record and people also who may be wanting to participate are starting to get a heads up of what community organizations are.
What we can do.
Exactly.
I do want to put out there too, that the coalition isn't just for organizations. Single people can apply for it. So I think that's a a large missed opportunity. Um, because I think a lot of our grants have to be for an organization. So we've had some we had one single person.
The piano lessons or something. So some good opportunities for kiddos to kind of, you know, subfill in where you know, I doubt either school district is able to do piano lessons kind of thing, but yeah. Great. Um, so any questions on cultural trust and what they're up to? There are lots of good activity. They really hit the ground running, which I was very pleased and Miranda has done a fantastic job getting them energized and excited. Sometimes maybe too too excited and wanting to take on too much immediately. Um, so she's done a good job of getting them motivated and getting them sort of into manageable goals. Other than doing all of the things all at once.
Want to do it right now.
Oh, yeah. Um, you gotta go big, go home attitude.
Well, that's good too. Well, I moved to appoint Diana Wonderley to the Gillum County Cultural Trust Coalition effective October fifth, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we appoint Diana Wonderley to the Gillum County Cultural Trust Coalition effective October fifth, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. But once again, still looking for two members. Folks in the north end, if you're interested in getting involved in a really feel-good board.
Funds.
Reach out to Miranda. We still have two openings. Um, okay. Six point six, consider approval amendment number one to Oregon Health Authority Fiscal Agreement number one, six nine five zero eight. Does not look like Holly is on, but I will give. How about this? Delaney did the initial. So Delaney, do you want to just walk us very briefly through what this amendment is? Sort of and what the commissioners can expect in the long term of the management of public health?
Absolutely. So we received notification from OHA that they're amending the fiscal agreement. Uh, and so I reached out to Holly to have her do a little bit of the work and just figure out what this was exactly for. And based off of what she found out. Um, basically they're increasing two line items as well as modifying some of the program element descriptions and they're listed in there. Minor changes, nothing big, but these are very common. Um, fiscal agreement, this will happen routinely throughout the our fiscal agreement term with them. So it's just kind of processing, figuring out what's changing and going from there. So I would imagine we'll see more of these over the next coming weeks and months as we get our public health stuff figured out. You know, this is new to us because we've never received public health funds directly to us before. They previously always gone to North Central. So it just, it's kind of a little nerve-wracking dealing with some of these agreements, figuring out what it is because we don't want to mess up the funding piece from OHA.
There definitely some confusion because one of the south, I was talking to one of the south district board members the other day up at the volleyball game and thank God Delaney came along.
Did you get some clarification?
He was under the assumption that we had always gotten the funding and then sent it on the North Central, which is which is just not how it works.
No, so it's you know, we're, we finally got the process figured out with OHA on us receiving the finances. They weren't notifying Nathan when they were with their, they send out a little funding report basically, and those weren't going to Nathan or Holly or anyone as far as we knew. So that is, yeah, so that has been now been corrected. Um, the funds are in the county and they are set to be dispersed. We have that figured out. Um, we received our first invoice from South Gillum County Health District for their subcontract that we have with them. So that has been sent to AP. So hopefully the funding piece should be a little bit smoother from here on out now that we got through that initial transition.
Those pieces she answered for me.
Perfect. Right. Yeah. And poor Nathan, but what it looks like from there is there's just deposits that show up in an account. And then he has to go back and try to figure out and the state unfortunately is not always good at labeling what they're transmitting. And so he has to then like go back like a sleuth, which on our mental health dollars hasn't been a big deal because they send out a dispersment report to us that says exactly. So he can go through and find which line items match up with the amounts. But they weren't sending that us that on public health. And so there was no way for him to know, are these public health dollars? Where do these seem to actually go? Cause they're not labeled very clearly. Sometimes it's just in a grant agreement number that's, and so
That's helpful.
Yeah, he doesn't always know when money hits the account, where it's coming from or what it's for. And so her, I, Delaney has definitely been on the phone and on email a lot with OHA saying like, are you sure that the money is actually going here and not to North Central? And where, where did these notifications go? So I feel like it's been ironed out now and it should go smoothly for him from here on out, but it's uh growing pains.
Yeah.
Um, so what I need from you commissioners is just an approval of the amendment. Again, Holly reached the South Gillen Health District understands what the changes are. They don't have any concerns about continuing to meet those expectations. And the state's sending us more money. So
Yeah, right.
Obviously welcome that as well.
And just as a note, in the future, I may uh put these under the consent agenda, but still get an explanation from Polly as to what's changing and throw that in the consent agenda if that's okay with support.
You okay with that?
Grow, grow.
You can always
You can always ask the question.
And you can always you can always pull it off if you decide that you, you don't want to do it under consent. Um, so I just need a motion to approve the amendments. We can get it signed and get it back to the state.
Move to approve the amendment. Number one, to your Oregon Health Authority Fiscal Agreement. Number one, six nine five zero eight as presented.
I will second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve amendment number one to Oregon Health Authority Fiscal Agreement number one, six nine five zero eight as presented. Is there further discussion?
Number one should be an indication to us that there would be many more.
Exactly. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, on to six point seven, consider approval revised physician descriptions for weed control officer and weed control assistant. Um, I will kick this over to Miranda and Pat, but just to note that this came up while we were advertising for the weed control assistant vacancy. That the special requirement sections didn't match between the weed control officer and the weed control assistant. And so this is largely just a cleaning that administrative piece up, but Miranda can kind of dig into specifically what we're amending.
Yes.
And
special requirements and licenses portion. Um, we had fixed all the road crew ones, but this the weed control. Uh, as far as the taking out the six month minimum requirement. Since they have to be have their C D L before hire instead of within the first six months of hire. Uh, and then we also wanted to add the A T V safety certification to the weed assistants.
Yeah. Plus, I don't know how we missed this in the weed control officer. My dad always had one, but they actually need to have a C D L as well. Some of their equipment actually requires a C D L. So so dad had it and Doug obviously has it now, but
In place, nobody paid any attention.
Exactly.
And then it, you know, it had a six month requirement, which we beat around a little bit on one of the leaving in there. It actually got left in there on the posting.
Yeah.
Which we will deal with that whoever applies, but um if they had their A T V certification and have their pesticide license, they can do a lot of work and
Or without their
Without their C D L. So but it's, we've put it in there as a requirement. I don't I'm, I'm a little, I'm not sure. We shouldn't have left the six months because the C D L training at this point is a lot more than it used to be.
Yeah.
And uh we may be limiting who we can hire.
Well, I think what it allows, I mean, even though the hiring committee could, hiring committee could, if you don't have anybody that has that qualification. I mean, you have the flexibility really to say this is contingent on you getting it within X number of months. Um, given how difficult it, I think it's going to be to find somebody who has
And it's probably
All of you.
Even the pesticide licenses, the time consuming license to get. So there's going to be issues there anyway. And they can't do anything about it.
Yeah. Yeah. So I mean, I, given the recruitment um environment as a whole. I, I feel confident that you guys can make good judgments as far as extending contingent offers. If we have somebody who we think will fit culturally and be able to do the job, but maybe doesn't have all of the certifications. I feel like in the long run, that's
And one of the real reasons to to fill this, I think, and I've talked to the current officer. He doesn't know how long he'll be around. You get somebody in training.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, great. So if you guys are uh okay with this, we just need to approve the revised physician descriptions as presented.
But I have a question. Are you adding in the valid C D L license on that?
We're putting the C D L into the assistant. It wasn't there. And we're removing the six months from both. The six months.
Yeah, so it would
And then we've added the A T V to the assistant. We added the C D L to the officer.
Yeah. Yeah. So the officer didn't have the C D L at all. So that's being added. And then the assistant is removing the six months of higher thing and then adding the A T V.
I, I would just add to your conversation that you know, when somebody gives you their um license, your valid C D L license. You might want to get their medical card at the same time because you don't always you know, that doesn't always reflect whether or not their license is
Valid or not?
Yes.
Yeah, because without the medical.
He did his uh medical card in February. Um, and it's not any matter. I scanned it and sent it to the D M V. And uh, four months later, when our insurance policy was getting renewed. My insurance guy called me and said Jared is suspended. And I said, I know he's not. So I have sent it to the D M V again. So just because somebody gives you their C D L license doesn't necessarily mean
Oh, because they could be still, they could still be holding a copy of their license that's been suspended.
Well, you're, yeah, because your license isn't actually suspended. It's your, it's your commercial um
Endorsement. Yeah, and they did not send notification to Jared that his life, that his C D L was suspended. So we didn't know that that was an issue until the insurance company contacted.
Oh, yeah. So and with the D M V the way they are, um so the best way is to get the actual printout and
So that when you do the background check, that they say it doesn't have a medical card, you can say I have it in my hand right here.
D M V login, we can close up. But I did talk to Liz about making sure that we're checking those.
Yeah.
And then putting
Road department will improve too.
Make sure that they're, they're always
So one of the projects commissioners, just so you're aware that Miranda is tasked with is there's a new state law that impacts who whose licenses we can check once they've been hired. And their job descriptions have to specifically have driving as an essential duty in order for us to do that. And so Miranda is going through all of the job descriptions to see, to make sure.
So what you're telling me is you could have weed assistant, whose essential job is not driving the truck. You can't ask him for his driving license because
If the job description does not, like we're allowed to do regular background checks at the beginning of hire, but these ongoing checks, like to make sure that all of our guys' C D Ls are still valid enough to date. We have to make sure that the job description clearly is saying that these are essential duties in order for Miranda to be able to do those checks.
By putting them in requirements, that should cover it.
Correct. But she's doing that countywide. So we're looking at anybody who we're checking because as a practice, what we have done is if people are driving fleet vehicles, we have been checking. And so we either need to update job descriptions so that they clearly say. And then the other thing is part of our onboarding and offboarding is Miranda, then we'll be adding what we're subtracting out of our account on D M V. On whether, because we don't want to be pulling licenses from people who are no longer employed. And so that will be part of that check system. Um, but we in order to even be checking in D M V, have to make sure that all just the job descriptions are meeting the state requirement so that we're not illegally checking somebody's driving record. Um, and so that piece she is diving into to make sure we're compliant with the state law. But that will allow us
There's actually a V O form that you can have your employee sign that allows you to check their driving record and they know it could be fine.
Yes, so
I can look at it and tell you what's
Got it. Yeah. So we may do like some double checks like that where we have a form and file. And then we also make sure that um on our job descriptions that they're just very clear that driving is an essential duty. And then that seems to be the hurdle that the state requires. So she's just going through to look and make sure that it's not I think it's really clear on our transportation, our road department, our weed department, sheriff's office, obviously those are essential duties. They need to be in vehicles, but the assessor's office where we're checking because it's more on an insurance, insurance side that they're in our fleet vehicles. And so we want to make sure they have valid driver's license. That's the gray area that we need to get clear on the job descriptions that these are essential duties. We expect, for instance, that the appraiser may have to go out to a a property someplace. So we just need to make sure that that job description actually says driving is required so that when Miranda does the checks, whether that's quarterly or annual or however we end up setting it up, that we're supposed to. So that's one of the things she's working on.
That's why she's so busy.
It's to eventually get it to where we can send out job descriptions to employees annually and let them review it.
Yeah.
Um, and see if there's anything major that we need to have or take off. Like give us a guideline to keep them updated. Go fluctuate.
Good job. Um, so I would just need a motion on the revised physician descriptions and um, and we'll go from there.
I move to approve the revised weed control officer and weed control assistant physician descriptions as presented.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the revised weed control officer and weed control assistant physician descriptions as presented. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move into announcements in next meeting. Next meeting is going to be October nineteenth in Arlington. Just a scheduling note for folks who are thinking you need something on the court's calendar, just to be aware. We'll have the meeting in Arlington in two weeks in November. We'll have the first meeting of the month in Condon. The second meeting, which would be the third Wednesday, also conflicts with A O C. So we will not be having that meeting. Um, and then at this point, we are scheduled for two meetings in December. Um, so sometimes that changes if we don't have enough on the agendas. We're transitioning in a new commissioner. We may occasionally decide to pull that second meeting in December. Um, so just be aware, if you have something that you need the court's attention on, we're down to four meetings left with Sherry right now.
Short timers.
Short timers. You are officially a lame duck.
And, and as we talk through these things, they're ongoing. Every once in a while it gets a little lump in my throat thinking I'm not going to be involved.
All right, I'll be gone.
Okay, you know my number.
Um, okay, uh, Sherry, what have you got going on?
Well, let's see. Next Tuesday, Delaney and I Well, let's see, next Tuesday, Delaney and I and um and um Commissioner-elect Watkins.
Potter slash Watkins.
I got that from my mother. She always called people by their maiden name. Anyway, uh, we'll be meeting Wes Polly and Delaney. And we're just gonna um go over public health and make sure we're all on the same page and see what's going on and.
I'm gonna send you the invite today.
At ten A M. And let's see, what else do I have going on? Um, how come this is, oh, um, hmm. I went through um I've three or four calendars and I went yesterday and tried to coordinate them all, but I don't think I coordinated this one. To have everything on it. Norcore on Thursday, the twentieth, and we're meeting uh right now. I think we're meeting every other month. So then we'd meet again in in um December, but not in November. And Capco is the last Friday of every month, eleven. And there's several of us are going to be going off that board at the end of the year because of um transitions and um commissioner positions. So um they're working on that to fill their board. And um I think that's, that's it until the next quarter.
Pat, what do you got going on?
Well, there's a bunch of A O C committee meetings coming up.
Yeah, I have so, I have some of those on here, but.
Rest of this week, next week, I got doctors appointment has been tomorrow or Friday, so I'll see how that works, but.
Oh, the Creas.
And then Creo will be next, a week from Friday in the Grand Quays building as Wesley.
That's cool.
Um, did you guys see the email from Kathleen Cuddy Widen's office?
Kathy?
I sent a um email to her asking how they determined dispersion in response. And got back to kind of a, well, actually what she said was that it was confusing. Um, it was super complicated and based on income, economic stuff, federal lands, et cetera, detached as explainer. I haven't done a deep dive, but I'm super glad we were able to get this through. It's going to mean a lot, particularly for counties like we live that don't have solid ways to renew mobility.
Mm hmm.
So that's why we're kind of down. Apparently it was in the determining factor of how they funded it. We didn't get much because we got a lot of bill.
Well, and I think uh looking at the distributions, a lot of it's based on like federal forest lands and yeah, stuff like that. So some of our neighbors to the east.
Some of the bigger counties didn't get very much, but.
Yeah. And some of our neighbors to the east are really, it's going to be a huge amount for them.
I just think bacon was like a couple million.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness, wow.
Um, and then um did anybody follow up? I did not follow up with Nathan's going this morning on the second conference meeting. Make sure we applied for.
I did not close that loop. Um, and he's out of the office out today, but we can make a note to connect.
And could you make sure we get that? All and then I've been talking to some neighbors, neighbors, officials, Kenny. Got some meetings set up and potentially set up with some neighbors that are that brought large industry into their communities and how they went through um from the tax abatement issues and stuff. It's been really, really interesting. Um, some of those, we have some struggles internally in the city and on it. And I'm looking through that and being understanding that um that uh, well, Yemantilla County, Hardeston, they've got some joint um enterprise zone areas and there's a couple of deals that are gonna go in there and they've recently gone through that whole process. So that's what they feel like is what's reasonable today in those agreements. And um it looks like Marl County will be doing one of that for the first few years.
Um, on my end, I just wanted to note that I think we've turned up report. Great meeting.
Yep.
So the meeting which we've referenced, the next joint port court meeting um has been firmed up in that is.
Twenty second at four P M. And it will be in Arlington.
Um, and so the idea would be cities from both ends, but in particularly I hope Arlington will be able to participate. I also mentioned it to um Mister Johnson, the school superintendent in Arlington, that it would be great to have the school district at the table and talking about some of their projects and initiatives. Um, I think let's just make a note as well to include the health districts um in that, in those invites. So if they want to come, that's great as well. Um, if there's some overlap. So um, yeah, so mark your calendars, November twenty second. It's uh Thanksgiving week um would be the first one of these and the hope again would be to ping pong back and forth between the two and try to do these quarterly so that um we get partners on the table talking about what they're working on and looking for ways to partner between all of the various public entities and agencies.
And my hope is to coordinate with Jen on the agenda prior to about a month. So no, but October twenty second. So have that firmed up about a month before, so then we can send out invites and notices that include the agenda. So people can see if they're interested in participating in any of those discussions.
Perfect, right? Um, so that is uh that. Um, the other big thing that is happening that I just want to flag for you is tomorrow will be the final um or the, I don't want to say final, it's the landing meeting for our Rocket Childcare Initiative. Um, and the reason I don't want to say final is the the intent of this meeting is to get commitments from the partners to stay around the table. And to set six month and twelve month and beyond sort of goals for how we can work together because childcare is such a complex um problem that it's not going to be solved with this initial thing. Um, so my hope is that um coming out of this meeting tomorrow, there will be some sort of next steps and commitments from the partners, particularly, I will say commissioners. The focus for this particular group has been narrowed to look specifically at increasing home-based providers and starting to address the workforce pipeline um that the licensed centers need to actually need capacity and to stay within their licensing ratios. Um, because that continues to be a challenge um for both centers, I think, to have sufficient workforce. Um, my intention is to, for the court, to do a deeper dive into looking at the entire ecosystem. So the things that are not being addressed by the Rocket um is stable funding. Um, partners, our state and federal partners, funding at a level that they need to to support, you know? For instance, the state funds that are coming in are wonderful, but they don't cover the entire cost of having that slot open. And so what ends up happening is we end up backfilling for the state or the feds because they're not paying their full share. So we need to, the three guests and Leah need to be aware of what that looks like so that when we are in places where we can advocate, we're aware of what that impact is on our local providers. Facilities is an issue with both, I think. Arlington may disagree, but theirs is aging. And so at minimum, we need to look at, at some point replacing probably that facility. Um, at the, at the south and it's a relatively new facility, but in that capacity, so looking at expanding that. Those are things that um are critical to solving the overall ecosystem, but for this particular group, which is school districts and all kinds of things, um is probably not, like this really is a funding and resources discussion, which is probably better at this level between us and the centers. So I wanted to flag for you because there's some, there's some perceptions out in the community that I think you need to be aware of, that I'm already started, starting to hear back that if, well, if the county just increases the number of classrooms in Condon, that'll address it, you know? But what Janine would say, if she was sitting here, is I need qualified teachers, I need funding, I need all of the things. You know, like facilities is one of multiple sort of things that all need to come into place in order to increase our slots. And so part of my intention is is probably to bring some presentations to you guys as a way, not only so we're all up to speed on what the issue is, but also so the public can get their heads around how complex this issue actually is. So that they understand that it's not just a simple thing. Um, but all of that to say, after tomorrow's meeting, my hope is to at least bring back to you what this group has talked about in terms of workforce development. Because there are some things that the county, I think, is going to be asked to um really plug in existing programs, but maybe rethink them. So rethink how we do our summer work experience. Can we incentivize and support um say year-round internships for for youth that have decided, you know, actually, I'm interested in this. I'd like to work in the center after school, like maybe funding some slots to be able to do that so that they can get their hours. Um, just as an example, there's one high school student right now who has been doing our summer work experience program. Now is qualified as an assistant one because she, as part of her work or work experience, took all of the classes that Department of Ed requires. And so she actually counts in their ratio. Um, so yeah, it's a high school student and she has an interest in doing it after school. She happens to be in Ainsley's classroom, which is why I know her. But every time when I go to pick up Ainsley, they're reading books together and they're doing things that this student is actually contributing already as a, I think she's a junior or senior um in their ratio, which means that that allows Janine to relieve some of her other staff. All of those kinds of things. And so part of our workforce thing is looking at what programs do we already have? That maybe if we do some small tweaks here and there, could actually really encourage uh kids that are interested in this as a career path and giving them a clear pathway. Now this, now that, now this, so that those kids who are raising their hands and saying, this is where I want to, what I want to do, that we're lining up every opportunity so they can just go and and at the same time, it will alleviate some of the problems we're sitting in centers. So it's really exciting. And so I want to share the work that this group has done because um this piece is really crucial to everything else. Um, other than that, uh, yeah, A O C meetings coming up. Um. I think those are the big things. The other thing that, which Pat already mentioned, was the um the funding that we're seeing, seventy-three thousand a year for the two. Um, Delaney and I did have a follow-up discussion with uh the superintendent in Arlington. They are definitely wanting to move forward ASAP on housing. And so I encouraged uh Larry to go ahead and apply our fall capital projects are going to open up um shortly. And so to at least apply for some initial funding to get the engineering, the, you know, all of that piece. They're looking at their piece of property that is actually above the school. Um, it's right now like gravelly kind of area and I think it looked like they had like.
Parking for the baseball field.
Exactly. So that's the area that they're looking at right now. Um. Yeah. So um they, I would expect, um, we have invited him actually to come meet the court um during our next meeting when we're in Arlington. So he may be giving us a preview of what that actually, what his vision is and and that kind of piece. And then talk to us about, you know, other priorities that we ask for the school district. And so, but I I did want to flag for you that that is still, they're still very interested in moving forward on that piece. And so um just from a capacity standpoint, Delaney and I have been talking about how um with all of these massive initiatives, we may need to start getting very um, putting some boundaries up on which of these projects we want to tackle first. Um, so like the school district, if they're ready to go, that may be end up being, this is the housing project that we're going to work on first kind of thing. The childcare stuff, it may end up being that the Condon Center is ready before the Arlington one is. And so I just want to put that on the record that my intention is to try to get to everybody's projects at both ends, but we're running into some capacity challenges because we're also trying to do fiber on top of it. Um, that there's only so many large construction projects we can manage internally at once. And we're starting to feel like we may be hitting that um thing. So I wanted to put that on the record because I know when Catherine listens back to this, she's going to say, what about housing in Condon? I still want to do that as well. I just am feeling like we have too many things we're trying to tackle at once. And so I think we're gonna try to be strategic on who's ready to go now and that. Yeah, and that that is the priority for whoever's ready to go first. Um, just because I'd like to have some wins as well. I'd like it for people to actually, exactly. Um, so that is it for me. Um.
We need to keep our eyes open for housing for on community council and deal.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
The apartment deal up here, Kimberly said was really nice. She was directed away from the because of cost fixed bill.
Oh, got it.
I think that came from Rob Goleman.
Got it. Um, anything else for the good of the order? If it's, if not, it is twelve forty-five and I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting.